And welcome to the City of Spokane for the Advanced Council Agenda Briefing Session for September 27th and the Administrative and Legislative Session for September 20th. I'm City Council President Pro Tem Candace Mum, and we will take role, Ms. Pfister.
Council President Beggs. Council President Pro Tem Mum here. Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart. Councilmember Kinnear. Councilmember Stratton. Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
I now like to introduce City Attorney Mike Armesby, who is going to be walking us through our briefing session for September 27th.
Thank you very much, Council President Pro Tem Mum. On the Administrative Consent Agenda proposed for next week, the first item is a proposed value blanket for fire hydrant locks, and Lauren Searle from the Water Department is here to brief this item. I don't see him. I will reach out to him, and we'll go to the next item on the agenda, and it involves the recommendation for the purchase of various vehicles, and Richard Giddings, our fleet manager, is here to brief that item. Both items.
Good afternoon, City Council. Fleet Services is seeking approval for the purchase of two vehicles, as well as two service bodies to be installed in the vehicles. The first for code enforcement is a Ford F-550 four-wheel-drive diesel from Budgerary Ford using Washington State Contract 05916 for $54,907.85, including tax. This will be equipped with a dump body purchased from Freightliner Northwest using RFB 4401-17 for $36,862.65, including tax. This will replace a unit that has reached the end of its economic life. The second for the Water Department is a Ford F-250 four-wheel-drive diesel from Budgerary Ford using Washington State Contract 05916 for $45,970.27, including tax. This one will be equipped with a utility body purchased from Freightliner Northwest using RFB 4401-17 for $31,392, including tax. This unit will replace a Ford F-250 that has reached the end of its economic life. Both diesel vehicles are being purchased in accordance with our clean fuel requirements in anticipation that renewable diesel will be available in the future. Any questions?
Thanks, Rick. The next item is the recommendation of a proposed agreement with Family Promise of Spokane, and Margaret Henson is here to brief this item.
Thank you. On behalf of CHHS, I'm requesting permission to add funds to a Family Promise contract that provides overflow shelter for families experiencing homelessness. The request is to add $16,459.34, which represents the remaining balance of this one-time foundation grant from Kaiser Permanente. Thank you.
Any questions for Margaret? They not seeing any would move to the next item, which is a proposed agreement with the Guardians Foundation to operate the Cannon Street Shelter, and Kirsten Davis is here to brief this item.
Good afternoon, council members. We would like to get approval to do this contract with the Guardians Foundation to provide services for the facility on Cannon Street through the Guardians Foundation that will be effective starting October 1st and go through June 30th of 2022. The amount is not to exceed $1,858,862, and this would be a 24-hour facility.
Councilmember Kinnear, I'll jump in. So Kristin, how many RFPs did we get for this contract to run the shelter?
We received three.
Thank you.
I have a question. Chairwoman Mum. Sorry.
That's okay. I usually let Mike catch those. You go ahead.
Okay. Sorry, Lori, go ahead.
Yeah, Mike was in another world, so I thought I'd... That's a lot of money. I want to make sure that for the length of that contract, it will be 24/7, and there is going to be something that's going to come up next that says they're cutting back. And I also want to know how many beds are going to be in that facility.
Right now, it has 72 spaces. That can also always depend on health district protocols, given the situation with COVID, so that number can flex depending also with outbreaks. So, you know, but the contract is for 72 spaces. Yes, this contract is for 24 hours a day through June 30th of 2022.
Kristin, my question is, let's say for some reason, they can't go 24 hours. They're doing 18 hours. Does this contract foresee that, that there'd be a reduced amount?
Are you saying that by things out of our control that it goes to less hours? Or I'm not getting what you're saying.
I'm just looking through... I guess what I'm hearing you say is the contract would have to be amended.
Correct. Yes, it would have to be amended, yes.
Yeah, so this is like 90 bucks a night. I'm more used to more like $50 a night, so I'm just wondering, how does this compare to some of our other vendors per night, on a per-night basis for 24/7?
Well, the difference is that it is 24 hours a day. The contract that we've had in the past for overnight is a night-by-night, and this extends throughout the day, so there's an increase in cost there in staffing and things.
I think that's all the questions, Mr. Armesby.
Okay. Thank you. The next item is a proposed multi-family housing property tax exemption agreement, and Teri Stripes is here to brief this.
Council members, thank you. We last spoke about this multi-family tax exemption project back at your urban experience. I believe you can all see my current screen, so this is depicting a map of where this project is located. The name of the project is Millennium Monroe. It's at 2002 North Monroe Street. It intends to have 78 units when it's constructed. The construction cost estimates are at $15 million. They are going to try and reach the 12-year exemption qualifications, with 20% of the units being household income restricted to low to moderate incomes. We estimate that the foregone revenue from this project is about $40,773. It's a breakdown of about $522 per unit, and then for the total term of 12 years, that would be about $489,000. This is located in the Emerson Garfield neighborhood. It is centers and corridors, pedestrian auto-accommodated zoning, so it is allowed outright. Do you have any additional questions for me?
I have one for you, Teri. This seems like an opportunity to work with the neighborhood. I don't know if you've had a chance to present yet to Emerson Garfields, but they might be able to put in for some traffic calming improvements, pedestrian improvements, because that density would go all the way back to the back of the block. Just putting that out there.
I have not presented to neighborhood councils on multi-family tax exemption projects. It was recommended at Urban Experience that this applicant possibly reach out to the neighborhood, so I was going to let them know about that. It might be a good opportunity for them to work together.
I agree, and I'm also thinking, though, that the city could have some enhancements with some infrastructure in front of this, because it goes all the way to the back of the block and would have an impact on the neighborhood, and the neighborhood could possibly partner with the city to sort of welcome this density into that part of the neighborhood by having, you know, proper ADA ramps and sidewalks for pedestrians to connect them to the corridor. So just looking for that opportunity, because there are funds available, and Emerson Garfield is a great neighborhood to partner with for those traffic calming applications.
One of the things to remember that if those ADA requirements are needed, it will be a condition of the development, too. So it wouldn't have to be neighborhood dollars that would advance that. But I do understand what you're saying. We did the Monroe streetscape improvement, but I don't believe there's been any on Shannon.
And that's exactly my point, is we did talk about with the neighborhood of extending it. We talked about this thing called... Councilmember Stratton remembers it. We called it Monroe 2.0, and how we make it very welcoming to the corridor along these side streets. And I agree with you that the developer would be required to do ADA on that one corner, on the northwest corner, but there's four corners. And so when you create a better pedestrian environment around there, it just is a great opportunity when all this other work is being done. So I decided I'd mention it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Teri? Oh, Councilwoman Wilkerson.
So Teri, in your short presentation, you said they will try to meet the requirements for the 12-year exemption, or they will meet the requirements?
Yes. With multi-family tax exemption, this contract is a conditional contract. They have to apply for multi-family tax exemption before they can do construction. So right now, their goal is to have a 12-year project, but if they get through the length of the project and they aren't able to hit those requirements, they're allowed to do an eight-year project in the end. We see a couple of them switch, but it's because these contracts are all conditional until everything is built, said, and done.
Thank you very much. We'll discuss that when it comes back before us.
Thank you. Begging the council's pardon, Lauren Searle has been able to join the meeting, and so we'll go back, if we could please, to item number one, which is the proposed value blanket for the fire hydrant locks, and Lauren Searle from the Water Department is here to brief this item.
Good afternoon, council. I apologize. I have some technical difficulties getting through the VPN, so I've called in on the cell now. This item is a three-year value blanket with McGard for the purchase of hydrant locks that's with an annual spend of $750,000 and a option for two additional years, not to exceed a total of five-year value blanket with McGard. Any questions?
Well, thank you, Lauren. Now we'll go back to...
Thank you.
Now we'll go back to item six, which is a proposal to accept funding from the U.S. Department of Transportation, and Major Eric Olson from the Spokane Police Department is here to brief this item.
Thanks, Mike. Good afternoon, council members. Spokane Police Department is looking for approvals to accept funding from the U.S. DOT, Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration. It's a grant for $187,382, grant funding that will be used to put towards traffic enforcement, trying to reduce unsafe driving of both commercial vehicles and those other vehicles that interact with commercial vehicles, trying to reduce aggressive driving and the number of collisions. This is a two-year grant. Any questions?
Councilwoman Cathcart to begin with, and then Councilwoman Wilkerson.
Yeah, thank you. I guess, is this similar to previous grants that we've had for enforcement regarding commercial trucking, for example?
Yeah, it's one that we've had similar grants in the past, yes.
Because I know I've heard, you know, from folks in the commercial trucking industry, just a lot of complaints over some of the just odd enforcement choices that have been made, you know, stops that really hold them up for hours, and over little things like a lunchbox not being tied down properly or something like that, like literally silly things. And so I'm just hoping that we're not, you know, kind of continuing to perpetuate that stuff moving forward with this grant. And that typically, or in the past, it was shared with me that that was, the enforcement of that was due to a grant similar to this.
I'd be curious to see some of those infractions of a lighter nature that you're talking about. I know that some of the infractions I have seen are for vehicle overloading and defective equipment, such as not enough lug nuts. We've had vehicles that are hauling, you know, 10 tons of material through the cities. We'll come with broken lug nuts or missing lug nuts, and if you have a vehicle that's two tons overweight, that does immeasurable damage to the road, it's not as mentioned stopping distance is required. So what we're doing is trying to improve the safety of the, not just the commercial vehicles, but obviously those vehicles that are passenger vehicles, because you get hit by one of those, there's a lot less protection when you're dealing with the vehicles of those size.
Yeah, if it's something substantial like that, that makes a ton of sense. Just hopefully, we're not really working on the nitty-gritty stuff.
Councilwoman Wilkerson.
Thank you. I was just wanting clarity, since we are down so many traffic calming public safety officers, where receiving this grant money, I'm just concerned about the staffing of being able to execute on this grant, receiving it.
So to address that, we haven't taken, we haven't, like dissolving complete traffic unit, we've taken some of the actual motor officers, those that are riding motorcycles, and reassigned those to patrol, hopefully just for temporary fashion to stop GAAPs over, hopefully, my hope is till the end of the year, but we'll see what the numbers say. We still have our DUI enforcement officers, our photo enforcement officers, our officer, our supervisor, and the two commercial vehicle officers are still working in the traffic unit as we speak, carrying out, and they will be working now as part of this grant. This grant is actually retroactive, I think to the beginning of September, maybe even a month prior. It's just the way this grant funds and it works through the federal government. We don't get it, the official approval to now, but it does backdate. But we will, we should be able to, with nothing else pending, or, you know, happening, that we should be able to fill the requirements of this and accomplish the task.
I'm sorry, quickly, so is this all salary?
No, this is overtime for officers to work different types of specials and target enforcement specials.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions for Eric? Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a proposed five-year agreement with the Downtown Spokane Partnership, and I know this item was discussed at length at the committee meeting this afternoon, but Councilwoman Kinnear is here if there's any other issues or thoughts that have come up since that meeting this afternoon. And Councilwoman Kinnear, is there anything you wanted to say before we moved on?
Oh, gosh, I think I've said it all. Thank you.
Okay. The next item are the placeholders, first of all, for the report of the mayor on pending claims and pending payroll claims, and then finally, the placeholder for city council meeting minutes, and those blanks will all be completed prior to next week's meeting. We then move to the legislative agenda, and we have two special budget ordinances. Paul and Josie from the Budget Office is here to brief the first one. Paul?
Thank you, Mike, and good afternoon, council members. This first item was deferred from your August 23rd advanced agenda. It is a special budget ordinance in the amount of $889,807 for one-time costs related to law enforcement and criminal justice-related legislation. It's money we receive from the state that we are looking to receive and allocate. And happy to take...
Council President?
Yeah, I don't have any questions about it, but last time we talked about this, I was hoping that we could modify this, so we can take the money but not approve the spending until council goes through the process of deciding what to spend. I know today, we have two items that we had agreed were related, but the rest of it, I don't know that we've put it through the process to agree on. So I guess, I'm wondering, Paul, if it can be written in a way that we accept the money, but we haven't approved the other spending on it until we approve specific items?
Council President, I think we can draft it, so we receive and book the full amount of the revenue, and I think the amount that you're referring to is about $214,000. So we could appropriate that in, through one of the police grant funds, so that there would still be that $700,000, $600,000 of excess capacity that would need to be either come back as an SBO or appropriated.
Just checking in with the rest... Can we check in with the rest of the council? Are they comfortable with that? So you're looking to amend potentially?
What, amend, or can we suspend it and defer it?
There's also an issue just on...
It's not written.
I just want to mention, there's also an issue on, there was an extraneous item on the agenda, on this item, that says it adds one probation officer, and that is not correct either, so the clerk intends to update that for the other one. So is there a motion to defer this, or do we expect possibly amendment would come forward in the next week?
Council President, go ahead, Councilmember Kinnear.
I would concur with Council President Beggs, that if Paul and the finance folks can make sure that we get to approve what they're going to be spending it on going forward, I think that would suffice.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
So I concur with that. My concern is, there really has not been public comment on this, and that's why I'm requesting for the deferral. We have had outcry from the community, and one of the earlier meetings, when it was briefed by Chief Midel, he said there'd be community engagement, and I don't know if that's happened, or if it has, what that looked like.
Would you like to put that in a form of a motion?
So moved to defer to October 4th.
Second.
Councilmember Kinnear, then Council President Beggs.
No, I'm a little confused. Councilmember Wilkerson, what are you referring to that was community outcry?
How the money was going to be spent. So I support us accepting the money, but again, with the suggested changes of how that money's going to be spent, with input from council and community engagement, that's why I'm asking to defer it. So that's what I'm looking for. If there's another way to address that, I'm open to it.
I don't understand what's going to be different when we, to defer it. What are you expecting that will be different in those two weeks?
So how the money will be spent, specifically on the ballistic balls. That is a real hangup with the community and part of that. They had given us a list of how they want to allocate these monies.
So just so we're clear, if we defer some of those things, those things will have to go back out to bid. So, for example, those ballistic balls, the pepper balls. There's ballistic shields, which is a safety item.
Right, understood.
And to me, that's vital, it's safety, but the other one that's contentious is the pepper balls. We defer it, it will have to go back out to bid, more than likely, just so you're all aware.
Got Council President Beggs, then Councilmember Cathcart, then Councilmember Stratton.
I just wanted to say, if we do defer it, I'm still hoping that we'll get the amended version Paul and Josie was talking about, that we would accept the money, and any specific spending items would have to come through council. So I just, regardless of which way we do it, I'm hoping for that change.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, just looking for some clarity. So I understand if we, what exactly is the date at which they'll have to go back out for a new bid? Because is it October 1st? Is that what we're trying to do this ahead of time, or do this before? Because I know the issue with the pepper balls, I know there's a lot of folks who want to comment, and we don't have an evening meeting tonight for that to happen, and so there's been some conversation about just deferring that to next Monday, so that folks who want to comment can. And so I'm just looking for some clarity around, if that were to happen, I know that's separate, but if that were to happen, would they have to go back out to bid? Or is it after October 1st that that would happen?
The email that I got from Major McNabb did not say when, did not give me a date, and we can find out, but I don't know what the date is. He indicated it was a tight timeline.
Councilmember Stratton.
So if we, rather than defer it, if we accept it and then decide how the money's going to be spent, wouldn't that allow some time naturally for public input, so we wouldn't have to defer it? I don't know. I mean, it just seems to me, we've got two things, to accept it and then to decide how that money's going to be spent, and is there a way that we could combine that and get the public input on that second piece? And then, Paul, I guess I'm curious to see how you feel about it being deferred. What kind of challenges does that present you and the RFP process and all of that?
Go ahead, Paul.
So I can speak from the finance side. This isn't necessarily revenue we have to acknowledge or receive. We've already gotten the check from the state, so this is a way just to book the revenue in our financial system, so that we can make the expenditures and the purchases that are desired. And again, from, what only feedback I've heard as well, similar to Councilmember Kinnear, is I believe they had a bid, I think that's expiring the end of this current month, that they were open to get a purchase in before that, but beyond that, I would have to defer to really anybody else from PD to answer those questions.
Councilmember Kinnear.
I just got a message from Major McNabb saying, it's already expired, the vendor's allowing an extension, unknown how long they will allow that.
Currently on the table is a motion to defer for two weeks to October 4th, which would allow time for a possible amendment to come through, I believe, to address the concerns about accepting the funds, booking the funds, but having another touch when they were actually expended for certain items. Are we ready for a vote? Councilmember Stratton.
No.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Nay.
Councilmember Beggs.
Aye.
Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Nay.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Council President Pro Tem will break the tie and say aye, so we have more time to work on it. I always like giving people extra time if they need it. to work on it. I always like giving people extra time if they need it. Defer to October 4th. Thank you. Mr. Ormsby?
Sorry, sorry, unmuted. The next special budget ordinance, or the second one, is a Management Information Services Fund request, and Mike Sloan from IT is here to brief this item.
Good afternoon, City Council. Thank you, Mr. Ormsby. First off, there's some clarity that I want to ensure that it's corrected. When this was submitted, it was listed as System Administrator 2 request. That was in air, it's actually System Administrator 1. And this job classification had some small qualification changes that have been, were submitted through HR, Civil Service, and Bargaining Unit's approval of it, to expand the job classification to enhance reference to InfoSec or information security, because we could not get a classification written for a security analyst position in time. And that's based on the fact that we have lost two of standing employees, one's a project employee, one's been attempt seasonal extended to a point where we couldn't extend any further. And that person that was extended actually accepted an InfoSec job out at Liberty Lake, and was accepted in that position due to the experience serving the city here in the InfoSec Department of ITSD, which indicates to us that, you know, we are an entity that is striving to do what is right in regards to information and security, and it's been a never-increasing challenge, as all of you have experienced your annual training and your consistency of fighting spam and phishing schemes. In addition to all that, we had conducted a SA, State Auditor's Office audit that was paid for by the state, and identified several information security weaknesses. One was critical, others are high in security, and we are addressing those. But one of the key indicators in that report was that we were significantly understaffed for an entity of our size, for the efforts that we are trying to clear and maintain for info security, and ongoing support, as, again, information security is a growth industry, so to speak. The bad folks out there, the bad operators are forever increasing. So what we are asking for your approval is to take those funds that we had budgeted for temp seasonal and project employees in the past, and turn it into a full-time employee, a system admin one, assigned to our InfoSec Department within the ITSD. I would say that it's still not enough, but it's the right step for us to be able to maintain what we got, because many of you know Dan Wardell, you look south down your hallway, and you see him here, burning the midnight oil, trying to keep things afloat, and quite frankly, he's doing more than we are paying him for. This man has been really, really stepping up to the game, and we need help. So, with that, I'll close, and by saying we are seeking your approval for this FTE.
Any questions for Mike? Okay, next, we would move to emergency ordinances, and as Terry Pfister, our city clerk, notified all of us this morning, under the first reading ordinances, the ordinance relating to permit fees for short plats was put under first reading ordinances, and it was really meant to be put under emergency ordinances. So, with your permission, I would ask Amanda Beck, who is here to brief this, to brief the item now. The ordinance title actually appears under first reading ordinances, but it will be presented next week as an emergency ordinance. So, Amanda, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mike. Good afternoon, council. Really briefly, I'd like to touch on the process of review for short plats. So, it is an administrative review. What you see on screen, Chapter 17G .080, 17G .060, and then also Chapter 08.02 are most of the applicable, but not all of the applicable sections of code. And then, like other jurisdictions in Washington, you submit your preliminary short plat, which is reviewed by our lovely current planners and DSC, followed by your final short plat process, all reviewed administratively. So, the proposal for you is amending Section 08.02.066, which is zoning, and then also a minor revision to Section 08.02.064, which is for plats. Staff is proposing this as an emergency ordinance, as Mr. Ormsby noted. We do think that this is a good implementation of some of the strategies from the Housing Action Plan that were echoed in council's resolution, improving the HAP, and then also the mayor's July 26 proclamation. So, as a side-by-side comparison, currently preliminary short plats have a $4,325 fee plus $60 per acre, and then their final plat fee for short plats is $1,820 plus $30 per acre. The proposal is making this into basically a three-tiered approach. So you'll have a Type A, which is no more than two residential lots, which would be a flat fee of $250. Staff did propose a sunset of December 2023. And then Type B are lots that have access and utilities, and that would be a Type 1 application fee, which is $1,085. What I will note is, while the application fee itself will be a Type 1 fee, the review noticing, all of that will still follow the Type 2 process. And then lastly, the Type C, which are lots that require improvement, so extension of right-of-way, extension of mainline utilities, or say, pocket residential, where they're creating a private access drive, and that would keep the Type 2 application fee of $4,325, plus that $60 per acre. So, this amendment revises Chapter 08.02, which is not a part of the UDC, and therefore does not require an amendment process that is outlined in 17G .025, but we'll note that city staff did notify the Plan Commission at their meeting on September 8th that this was moving forward. And we are looking at future revisions to the short plat review process that would follow that process in 17G .025. So, workshopping with Plan Commission, going to them for recommendation, and then ultimately coming before City Council. And I'm available if there are any questions.
Amanda, I have a question. Does the sunset apply to all three, then?
Councilmember, no, it would only apply to the Type A.
So it'd be a permanent reduction for the other two, or the other one?
So, to answer your question, the Type A would be a sunset in December 2023, and then that would go away, and then there would just be the quote-unquote Type B and Type C, which would still have the reduced fee.
My understanding was that it was for all, so, I don't know if the council, did the rest of the council understand that, that it was forever? I see Councilmember Kinnear.
That was not my understanding. Either I wasn't paying attention, or I was believing something else, and I'm wondering if we could amend that, so that we do have a sunset on all three, because I know that that's not uncommon, if we choose to extend that, we certainly, well, if we're still here. We can extend that if those of us are still on council. So, I am open to a sunset on all three. And I would like to hear from Amanda about that, if that's something she thinks would be something to consider.
Councilmember Kinnear, one of the things that informed the proposed text was that there is an internal policy that our DSC staff have been using. If it is simplified short plat, they will do a reduced fee, and so we have been doing that previously. So we are trying to basically codify a process that we have been doing, which is why staff had written the proposed text that the Type B would have the reduced fee with no sunset. Does that address your question?
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Yes and no. I see Councilmember Wilkerson has something to say.
So, Amanda, I could see us not having a sunset on one for the short plat, for the two, for someone who maybe wants a small homeowner. I could see that not having a sunset, but certainly the other two, when it is more of a commercial development. So, I'm almost ready for a flip, on what we sunset and what we don't.
Well, thank you for clarifying this, and we have a better understanding. We have a week to bring forth an amendment, so we'll discuss that amongst ourselves when we have a moment. So, thank you. Any other questions on this item?
Thank you, Amanda, for...
Councilmember, I do have one more thing. Let's ask both Amanda and Lewis Mueller to put something in writing for us, so that we're all seeing the same thing from the same people, and reading the same thing, and then we can perhaps, from that written document, go from there, ask questions that are pertinent to that document, and all be seeing the same thing at the same time.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
And I would just like a brief summary of how you arrived at what you want to sunset and what you did not. That would be helpful to your thinking.
Councilmembers, we will draft up a memo with some proposed texts and get that sent out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we move on to resolutions and final reading ordinances. First resolution is one that was deferred from an earlier council meeting, dealing with the Way Out Center, and that has been deferred until next week. And I know there are meetings scheduled this coming week about various components of that. I don't have anything else to add, but other council members may have additional comments to make at this point, and it will be up for potential consideration at next Monday's meeting. Okay? Any, okay, not seeing any comments. I would move then to the next resolution, which deals with specific allocations of funding received from ARPA, and Council President Beggs is the sponsor of this resolution.
Yeah, this resolution consolidates several documents that we've shared with council, and shared with the administration, and gotten feedback from, and essentially, it would be a superseding resolution to the one we passed earlier this year, where we set out the four categories, reach out, and resiliency, and replenishment, and relief. This adds to a process where we consider proposals from individual city council members, proposals from the administration, and proposals from the general public, and sets that out. So, that's what it does. If we pass it, then that will be telling the greater public what our process is, and then we can start processing specific proposals. So, that's the overall intent. I don't think there's much new from what we shared at study council several weeks ago. There's a few other lines in there, from feedback from the administration, but other than that, it's pretty similar.
I just need to clarify...
Councilmember Kinnear?
Before we go to Councilmember Kinnear, I just need to clarify which item you are on, Mr. Ormsby, because I'm not sure everyone has it on their agenda.
It's Resolution 2021-0080.
I think there's a mistake on the agenda.
The 80 we have is the bid, and I believe that this was the filing error that perhaps we were discussing earlier today. So, right now, the item that was just briefed is not on the public agenda, so we would need to add it at this time.
And I'll check into that.
Yeah, I've got the bid items as 81 and 82.
Okay, so, Mr. Ormsby, how should I proceed here? Should we suspend the rules to add this item, then?
If the council would like to. Yeah, I've got two separate agendas here, and it's on one, not on the other. So if the council does want to consider it next week, it probably would be appropriate to suspend the rules and add it to the agenda.
I'm checking with our clerk, and she also agrees that it would need to be added.
Yes.
All right, so, we, is there a motion to suspend the rules?
I would like to suspend the rules.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, rules are suspended. Motion to add, is that you, Council President?
I move to add this item to our agenda for next week.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, just needed to clear that up. Is there anything more on this to brief?
Not on this item, but there are two additional items to brief, but Councilwoman Kinnear has a point to make.
I apologize, Councilmember Kinnear, I forgot.
That's fine. I know that Council President is, yes, he called on me, so. I want to make sure, you all, the three of you, and then, prior to that, Councilmember Stratton have done so much work on this one topic, to make sure that it's inclusive, that everything is being considered, dotted i's, crossed t's. I want to make sure that the public knows that this is not an attempt to slow the process down, but rather to be inclusive, to make sure that everyone is informed, and that we are doing the best by the public when it comes to using this money, so that we're not being frivolous, we're not being cavalier about how this money is spent, but we are being thoughtful. And so I want to acknowledge that. I want to acknowledge the four of you who have worked on that, and reassure the public, because we've been hearing about, what's the holdup, let's get going. And I know the mayor, at the very beginning, promised that there would be a public outreach, and so, the committee is living up to that promise. So, I just publicly want to thank you all for what you're doing on this.
Councilwoman?
Yes, Councilmember Wilkerson?
I just have to echo that. I have heard the same thing, like, what's going on? Larger cities have already been dispersing their ARPA dollars into the community that's being deployed, so we have been challenged with making sure it is inclusive, that we are doing outreach, and that everything that qualifies will actually be considered going forward. So, I can only tell the community, we are really moving as fast as we possibly can, because we know that money needs to be out in our community where it really can do the work it was designed for.
Thank you.
Any additional comments? Okay, then we'll move, we'd move to the final two resolutions, and Mike Piccolo from City Legal is presenting resolutions setting assessment roll hearings for two business improvement districts. Mike?
Yes, good afternoon. These two resolutions are the annual resolutions that council passed, will pass every single year, for the, setting the assessment roll hearing for the downtown bid and the East Brague bid. The hearing will be set for December 6th, and between now and December 6th, city staff and the staff from the DSP and ESBA will be working to put together the assessment roll numbers, to get that filed with the city clerk's office, to prepare the published notice of the hearing, as well as the individual notice to all the ratepayers of their assessment, and on the assessment roll hearing.
Is there any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Ormsby? I've had a...
Yes, Council President Protem?
I've had a request while we have the rules suspended, to potentially add another item. Councilmember Kinnear?
Thank you. I would like to add the bid contract to September 27.
And do we have an item number on that? It was previously filed on Wednesday.
No.
Mr. McClatchy might have that.
We'll see if we can get that. We don't have an item number yet.
It's a contract?
It's a contract.
No, we don't have an item number yet, but I can get that for you.
All right. So, we have briefed it, is that right, Councilmember Kinnear?
Yes, we have.
So, motion to add the bid contract with a number to come. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor to add the bid contract to the 27th? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Ormsby.
Okay, thank you, Council President Protem. With that addition, I believe that the advance agenda for next week has been fully briefed to the council. to the council.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the 27th agenda?
I'm going to go second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Agenda passes. Now, to consent for today. Is there a motion to move any items? Councilmember Wilkerson, I believe you discussed possibly moving an item.
Thank you, Councilmember Mom. Yes, I had discussed moving the funding grants for the police until October the 4th.
This would be item three on consent?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Just to clarify, Councilmember Wilkerson, you're making a motion to move item three to, from the consent agenda to, today, to the legislative agenda for the 27th.
Correct, thank you, Councilmember Mom.
Excuse me, the 4th.
Yes, that's correct.
Correction, the 4th.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, so clarification, is it the 4th or the 27th?
It will be the 4th.
Okay, well, I, I absolutely support deferring a week to allow for testimony. I know we've had a number of folks who have chimed in saying they want to be able to testify on this issue, but I don't see the need to delay all the way till the 4th. That seems like a little bit extra long time, and that may, in fact, be a little bit too long for SPD to present their current bid. I think a week might be doable, but two weeks is probably a little bit difficult. So, I'd oppose two weeks, but I would certainly support a one-week deferral.
Any other discussion?
Councilmember Cathcart, I'll just respond to that since the RFP has already expired. It possibly can be extended, but there's no guarantee it can be extended, and then to give finance time to rework the ordinance to what we talked about, that we receive the funds and book the funds, and then how the funds are spent will be decided by council. So, there was just a few moving parts in that, that I just want to make sure everybody has time to weigh in on and get it corrected when it comes before us.
Anyone else? All right, we'll call for the question. The motion is to move item three to October 4th. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that looks like that's five to two, is that correct? Thank you. Now, Ms. Fister, would you like to read the consent for approval?
Councilmember Mom, could we take item six separately?
Item six?
Yes.
The interlocal agreement? Yes.
With the, with, envision?
Correct. We'll take that separately, thank you.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, real property purchase and sale agreement buy-in between the Spokane Airport Board and the city of two existing water towers, parcel 25320.9004, $345,000, relates to Resolution 2021-0079. Number two, purchase from municipal emergency services, Vancouver, Washington, of self-contained breathing apparatus equipment to meet current National Fire Protection Association standards, $2,152,962, including tax. Item number three is deferred to October 4 legislative agenda. Item number four, contract with Pomegranate Associates, Bellevue, Washington, for facilitation and engagement training for city staff and neighborhood councils related to the traffic calming program, not to exceed $115,000 plus tax to come from the traffic calming fund. Number five, acceptance of Spokane County Consolidated Homeless Grant and permission to subaward funds to partner agencies, $821,163. Item number six will be considered separately. Item number seven, report of the mayor of pending claims and payments approved, including those of Parks and Library through September 10, 2021. Total $7,936,249.82 with Parks and Library claims approved by the respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library total $7,108,053.40. Number eight, city council meeting minutes for September 9 and September 16, 2021.
All in favor of the consent agenda as read, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you, and now, item six.
Item number six, interlocal agreement among Spokane County, City of Spokane, and Spokane Area Workforce Development Council regarding the lease of space for the Resource Center of Spokane County, formerly Spokane Invision Center, from June 1, 2021 through May 31, 2023, $201,791.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Nay? Who says nay?
Nay.
Nay.
So, is that four to three?
Councilor, can you call that vote again, please?
Yeah, let's, let's do a division of the House there. So, all in favor of item six, raise your hand. Okay, all those who are not in favor, raise your hand. And that fails three to four. Thank you. And now, we move to the legislative agenda. Clerk Fister?
Ordinance 36100, amending ordinance number C 35971, passed by the city council December 14, 2020, and entitled in ordinance adopt, an ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city of Spokane for 2021, making appropriations to various funds of the city of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2021, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage, and declaring an emergency in appropriating funds in Section One Asset Management Capital Fund. Number one, increased appropriation by $2,834,452. A, $1,295,188 of the increased appropriation is transferred from the asset management capital to the asset management fire capital fund. B, $1,539,264 of the increased appropriation is transferred from the asset management capital fund to the asset management police capital fund. Section Two Asset Management Fire Capital Fund, number one, increased revenue appropriation by $1,295,188. A, of the increased appropriation, $1,295,188 is a transfer from asset management capital fund. Two, increased appropriation by $1,295,188. B, of the increased appropriation, $1,295,188 is provided solely for capital expenditures related to fire. Section Three Asset Management Police Capital Fund, number one, increased revenue appropriation by $1,539,264. A, of the increased appropriation, $1,539,264, a transfer from asset management capital fund. Two, increased reserves by $1,539,264. B, of the increased reserves, $1,539,264, is provided solely for capital expenditures related to police already budgeted. This action allows for capital expenditures in the asset management fire capital fund and the asset management police capital fund deferred from August 23, 2021 agenda.
Councilmember Wilkerson, you are the sponsor? Any comments before we go to public comment?
It's been briefed, we'll go to public comment, thank you.
Wonderful, we have one guest who'd like to provide public comment. Welcome, Nicolette Ockletree. When you are ready, go ahead and hit star three, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
So, I remember that this was deferred from August 23rd, so it could at least be discussed in committee, and I watched the discussion during the committee meeting, but it was muddy, and in my opinion, it left a lot of things unresolved. So, I'm hoping during the discussion portion, in a few minutes, that a few of you could update us on whether or not some of the issues and questions you raised have truly been resolved. For example, Councilwoman Mom expressed a need for us to balance our use of these asset management capital funds with our debt service management responsibilities and obligations. Also, I recall City Council President Beggs highlighting the demand of our fiscal management responsibilities, such that in an ideal scenario, we would have a list of capital expenses the departments want funded, and an acknowledgement of a subset of which they would be willing to defer. Now, I do see two lists in the packet, one for the fire department and one for the police department, but what I don't see is any indication whether or not these are the total list of desired capital expenses for the entire year, and no indication of which of those would be willing to, they would be willing to defer into the future. And moreover, I see items on this list that, to my knowledge, have already been funded. For example, on the Spokane Police Department list, laptops are there which have already been funded. To me, this lack of clarity when it's been explicitly asked for by council signals a breakdown in communication and slash or a respect for what the council needs to fulfill their fiscal management responsibilities to their fullest potential, which leads me to my final note, which is, over the last few years especially, I'm seeing a huge gap between what makes it into the budget for the Spokane Police Department and what ends up becoming a so-called urgency and emergency to fund. I hope that this informs the upcoming budget process for next year's budget, because there's too many known expenses coming through SBOs and other last-minute funding processes, and these should have been made into the budget right off the bat, because they were clearly foreseeable expenses, many of which are expenses that occur on a regular basis. So, if you guys could not only clarify whether or not some of the things you address in committee were actually resolved, and please look into when you address the budget here coming up in the future, that everything that's in the budget makes it into the budget, especially the foreseeable expenses. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. One technical issue, we do need a motion to substitute ordinance 36100 with a revised version.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you, other comments? Council President?
Yeah, I was just going to mention, just to answer Nicolette's question, so this version is a smaller version, and it includes items that we, I have been able to review and support, I think they're fine. I agree with Nicolette that this process, I wanted to see a different overall process, and if I'd seen that process, would have approved it the first time. So, the delay caught me the information I wanted, but as Nicolette, I think, mentioned, the public may not have gotten it. So, in the future, I hope that when there's a capital ask, we'll see the items that are wanted in, and see the items that are being foregone at the same time, so that people can, we can choose what's most important as opposed to having it chosen for us and presented to us. So, thanks.
Councilmember Kinnear? Councilmember Kinnear?
I, I want to concur with Council President Beggs, that I think that would be best for transparency's sake, so that not only the council knows, but the public knows what is being asked and what is being purchased. And we are, after all, stewards of taxpayers' dollars, so thank you, Council President, for getting that clarification.
Anyone else? All right, we'll call for the question. Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council President Beggs?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
Council President Protem is an aye. Next item is Resolution 77.
Resolution 2021-77, setting a hearing before city council for October 25, 2021, for the street vacation of Adams Street from the south line of Third Avenue to the north line of I-90, together with the alley between Third Avenue and I-90, from the east line of Adams Street to the west line of Jefferson Street, as requested by Volunteers of America Hope House.
And I don't have a sponsor for this, is there any council discussion? All right, we'll take a vote. Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council President Beggs?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
Council President Protem is an aye. Next item, 78.
Resolution 2021-78, preapproving the purchase of vehicles by the city of Spokane.
Do we have a sponsor for this? Is this you, Council President?
I think, I think it was me, Councilmember Mom.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilkerson.
Yes, we know the challenges that everyone is facing in buying vehicles, and so, in working with the fleet department and how we're trying to go green, we set up a process where the cars would be in a certain range that meets all the qualifications and would give them the ability to act more quickly on purchasing these vehicles instead of constantly losing out at this point in time, that's happened to us several times. So, this is a process that we can put in place to help resolve that issue.
Thank you, we do have one member of the public who would like to speak, so I'd like to invite back Nicolette Ockletree, and I don't think you even need to hit star three, I think you can go ahead and speak. You have three minutes.
Hello again, council. My question was, does this preapprove just the vehicles listed, or is this a change in the process for how all the vehicles are purchased in the future, including cruise vehicles? I understand the need to expedite the process, that vehicles approved for purchase can actually be purchased before they end up being sold to someone else. However, I just want to make sure that this won't end up opening up the door for all vehicle purchases to be solely up to the fleet services or individual departments' discretion. For example, if the police department were preapproved to buy all the vehicles they want, we would surely see them spending several million dollars at least right off the bat. Moreover, with respect to the police vehicles, there's a real concerning narrative that I first remember hearing from Major Olson in June of 2020, that after 100,000 miles, the maintenance on these vehicles becomes $66,000 a year, every year thereafter, which is the price of new vehicle. Now, I find this extremely hard to believe, that $66,000 a year in maintenance for vehicles is spent every year on each vehicle over 100,000 miles, and it seems that there needs to be some sort of robust inquiry into those figures and oversight in light of the fact that these factors are really difficult to verify, essentially. And regardless, it seems to me that we may, in the near future, have to take a look at the entire process of how, when, and under what conditions a vehicle is approved to be replaced, and a revamping of a more time-smart, streamlined process to approve the purchase of these specific vehicles, and once the approval has been made and the demonstration of the need is, is there. So, hopefully, we can, we can get a little bit better at the process, and hopefully you guys can clarify whether or not this is just for these, the preapproval is just for these particular vehicles, or if this is an entirely new process. Thank you for your time.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Just for clarity, it's just the ones on this list. We are not trying to usurp the whole process, but just in this window of time going forward.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Thanks, just want to clarify, not all vehicles are, let's see, the mileage on all vehicles are not created equal, so if you have 100,000 miles on a police car, 100,000 miles on another type of car, it's a different type of mileage. We've been, I think we've been talked, talked to about this numerous times with fleet, with police, the past administration, and will continue to have the discussion. It's not, it's not an apples-to-apples thing when you're talking about mileage, so just want to clarify that for the group.
Other council members' commentary? All right, we'll call for the question. Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council President Beggs?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Nay.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
Council President is an aye, passes six to one. Resolution 79.
Resolution 2021-79, joint resolution with Spokane County in the matter of authorizing the Spokane Airport to execute purchase and sale agreement with the city of Spokane for property located on a portion of Spokane County, Assessor Tax Parcel number 25320.9004, comprising of approximately 2.895 acres of land at Spokane International Airport.
Council President Beggs, I think you were the sponsor for this?
Yeah, this is just the analogous resolution that gives the airport permission to sell the city land for water towers. So, and the county has a similar resolution, and the airport board has passed it. So because we co-own the airport, we have to pass a resolution, even though we're selling it to ourselves.
Thank you. Other council members, anything? All right, we'll call for the question. Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Canir.
Aye.
Council President Beggs.
Aye.
Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Council President Protam is an aye, passes seven to zero. Ordinance 36104.
Ordinance C 36104, relating to the municipal courts probation department and services, amending sections 3.01, 8.710, 5a.05.020, 5a.11.005, 5a.11.020, 5a.11.030, and 10.07.038 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
And I'll just make a comment that the clerk read it correctly, .030 was repeated twice in the agenda. Councilmember Canir, you're the sponsor.
I am the sponsor. I would like to defer to Mr. Ornsby to the nuances of this.
As the council undoubtedly recalls, Howard Delaney, the municipal court administrator and probation supervisor, presented this. As a part of our remake of criminal justice services in the city, we're basically renaming departments that are relating to pretrial and other services, to make them more compatible with the services that they provide. And this has been discussed at length within the criminal justice community, the prosecutors, public defenders, and the court administrators' office. So we would recommend this, or trying to present a kinder and more approachable face to the people that we want to serve.
Thank you. Other council members? Council President.
I just, yeah, I just want to endorse this. Our municipal court system has really been the leader regionally in taking a different approach to holding people accountable and returning people to our communities, really, and understanding that people who are caught up in the system where they're charged with crimes have individual criminogenic needs that drive them, and it might be a substance abuse issue, a mental health issue, it might be an economic issue, it's different for each person. And we, as a city, are trying to meet each person where they are, hold them accountable to the community, but really understand that they're human beings first, and bringing them back in and giving them the services they need. So in some ways, these are just words, but they reflect, really, the cultural transformation that we're undergoing. We still have a long way to go, actually, but we're going in the right direction and we're leading the way. So I really endorse this change.
I also mentioned that a lot of members of our community have been a part of this reform and improvement, and there is a lot of work to be done, but there's, there's a lot that has been done. So we want to thank them for that. All right, we'll call for the question. Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Canir.
Aye.
Council President Beggs.
Aye.
Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Council President Protam is an aye, passes seven to zero. We have two attendees tonight for open forum, and I would like to welcome Kim Schmidt. Kim, you have three minutes, and if you could please hit star three, or you can just go ahead, I think we have that fixed tonight. Welcome, Kim.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, good afternoon, council. I want to bring attention to an upcoming event called the Rally for Health Freedom, which is set to take place on Saturday at 10:00 a.m. in Riverfront Park. The event has been organized by the same group that led last month and the mandate rally. I emailed Spokane Police Body Cam footage from that rally to you all this afternoon. You'll recall that my concern was not about the group's ability to express their First Amendment rights. My concern was for the overall safety of the event. I also urged counter protesters to stay away. The upcoming event presents a new set of challenges. This event is being organized without the proper permits. The organizer has publicly confirmed that he received an email from Riverfront Park Guest Services, which states that they are aware of the planned event as outlined and what can and cannot happen at a freedom of speech rally. Further, an organized rally must also follow health department guidelines, such as enforcing mask mandates for crowds of 500 or more attendees. The organizer was told in very clear language that his event, as planned, may not take place in Riverfront Park. Key parts of the event planning that violate the Riverfront Park rules include inviting food trucks, setting up vendor booths, holding a job there, using amplified sound, et cetera. The organizer posted a video response where he states, and I quote, "This event is not being canceled. This is our park. We paid millions of dollars for this park. This is the citizens' park. They can't suppress free speech. They will not silence those of us that are pushing back against any type of vaccine mandate. We will not be wearing masks. We will continue to celebrate freedom here in America, which is the country we still live in." Then he said some other stuff about the allegiance of people that will be in attendance, and he continues on, "We will not be silenced. We will not comply. The September 25 event is occurring. Sure, they may have paid taxes that helped to support the building and maintenance of Spokane's most iconic landmark, but so did we. The willful and frankly selfish determination of some should not supersede public safety and use of a public space that we all pay for. There are laws and rules in place that govern the appropriate use of public land. For example, when a person violates the rules of the park, they are trespassed from the park. When the space is misused, there are consequences. Further, as you will notice in the footage, enforcement of the new law that restricts open carry at protests was begrudgingly enforced when it was actually enforced. The group has now been educated about the law, and I expect that police officers and park rangers who monitor the event on Saturday enforce all applicable rules and laws without bias. Thank you for your time."
Thank you, Kim. The next guest is Nicolette Ockletree. Nicolette, you have three minutes. Go ahead, Nicolette.
Last month, I spoke during open forum about the medical mandate rally hosted by former Washington State House Representative Matt Shea and former Spokane Valley City Councilman Caleb Collier. I pointed out that the Dunning-Kruger effect is the silent pandemic underwriting our failure to keep these COVID outbreaks under control. These disinformation campaigns prevent us from making any progress in our fight against COVID. Not only are they spreading medical misinformation, but they're likely spreading COVID as well. It's hard not to see them as bioterrorists using medical misinformation and psyops to wage war against our community. Their rallies have moved beyond an innocent exercise of First Amendment rights, and as a result, Spokane citizens are trading the expert opinions of doctors and scientists for the conspiracy theories of extremists. Let's not make it any easier for them to terrorize our community. Now, as Kim pointed out, there is another rally on the 25th with live music, food trucks, vendor booths, et cetera. And regardless of being contacted by the city, notifying them that there were permit requirements, these individuals have made it clear that they have no intention of complying. So knowing that these folks have absolutely no intention of complying with the permit process or anything like that, what will the punishment of these violations look like? Now, that choice needs to be made carefully and executed wisely, because it'll surely set precedent for not only future rallies like these, but for the fair enforceability of permits and rules for other organizations to have events in the park. And so I hope that you guys take careful consideration over that, and talk amongst yourselves and with the city administrators, and, you know, the parks department, to figure out what is going to happen, especially with the police department as well. And in my last, like, remaining two seconds, I also want to say that I'm absolutely opposed to the fact that the Downtown Spokane Partnership is holding Fall Fest, considering all of the outbreaks recently. It just seems like a wise thing to shut down. We didn't have Hoop Fest, we didn't have Take Out the Park, you know, we didn't have Bloomsday and the traditional sense of things, and thank God, because I think that our outbreaks might have been a lot worse than they are. And it seems very irresponsible for the Downtown Spokane Partnership to hold Fall Fest in light of everything. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that brings us to the end of our legislative meeting, and we will see all of you next week at 3:30 at our briefing, and at 6 o'clock for our regular legislative session. Thank you.